Good evening, and I'll call the City of Cannon Falls City Council meeting for Tuesday, March the 6th to order. Roll call.
Councilmember Abidi?
Present.
Altoff?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Mattson is absent. McCusker?
Yes.
And Mayor Robinson?
Here. All please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, eternal.
All right, before we approve the amended agenda, I'd like to move items Resolution 2234 and Resolution 2335, which are items J and K on the consent agenda up to make that item five, which is declaring a vacancy on the council and appointing a city council member to the seat. Public input will move to number six, presentation is number seven, consent agenda eight, and reports number nine. With that amendment, I will take a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Cedar, second by Ken. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Carries. All right, that moves us on to item 5A, which is going to be Resolution 2334 declaring a vacancy on the city council. As you're all aware, that Mike Dalton has resigned from the city council, and so by the charter, we have to adopt this. And so I'll take a motion to approve Resolution 2334 declaring a vacancy.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ken, second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Carries. With that, we're going to move to item 5B, which is Resolution 2335. With the vacancy of Councilman Dalton's seat, I went out and started thinking about how to fill this seat for the remainder of this year. This seat will be up for election at the next election, which will be in November. So we don't have a lot of time to bring somebody up to speed, and with everything we've got going on in the city, I felt that we needed somebody that had experience with the council. I did receive three applications, and of those applications, I am presenting Bill Duncan tonight as a qualified person to immediately fill the vacancy on the council. So with that, the chair would like a resolution to or a motion to approve Resolution 2335.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ken, second by Cedar. Is there any discussion?
Only thing I'd have to say is, I'm good with this however it works, but Morris did call me from vacation and asked if this could be table till he got back. That's all I want to say.
I think we should move. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Carries. If you want to come on up, do we need to swear him in again, or? You want to read that, Lionel?
I can read it myself. I, Bill Duncan, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of city council member of the city of Cannon Falls, to which I have been elected. To the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me, God.
Welcome.
Welcome back. All right, I'll let Bill. You got your agenda and all ready to go, Bill? Okay. This time, we will move on to item number six this evening, which is public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Comments must be pertinent to city business and adhere to data privacy rules. No employees' names may be used, and personal attacks will not be tolerated.
Hi, my name is Adam Peters. I live at 700 West State Street, Cannon Falls, Minnesota. I guess you answered my first question that I was going to bring here, and that was to who you get to pick, and how do you apply to fill that spot. I guess I didn't read it in any paper. My other question is, is I've asked people, quite a few people, even on this council, Cedar got appointed, and I still don't know who, by who. Are we sure that he's the right decision? Is this being equally cited? Why is it not discussed with the residents of Cannon Falls? The chaos that's been going on with this city council is just beyond ridiculous, and I just, I'm glad it's an election here, and things are going to change. And I would also like to thank Leroy for everything he does, and all of you, but I know there's passion over there. Thank you.
Any ballots wishing to address the council under public input this evening? If not, we'll move on to item number seven this evening, which is presentations, and the first one is recognition of Police Commissioner Tom Morgan. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. When I came here in 2007, the council that hired me swore me in at my first council meeting, and after that, Tom Morgan took me out along with my wife, drove us around the community, and just kind of made us feel welcome. He served on the police commission before I came here. He was on the police commission for a total of 15 years. I think that one of the things, for me coming here and having Tom as part of the police commission, it's helped us, I think, you know, put on good people. Tom has been involved in numerous numbers of hires. His input was always incredibly valuable, and I think we've got a department that reflects that. So I was sad to see Tom turn in his resignation at the end of 2017. I certainly understand the whys behind it, but he'd be sadly missed, or sorely missed, excuse me. So at this point, I would really like to recognize Tom, and I appreciate the council in giving me this opportunity to do it in a public format. So Tom, if you could please come up? Tom, I've got a plaque that I want to present to you. Let me go ahead and read this first. The Cannon Falls Police Department Citizen Recognition Award, presented to Tom Morgan on March 6, 2008, in appreciation for your 15 years of service on the city of Cannon Falls Police Commission, and the impact you have had on those serving our community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Appreciate it.
And that you can hang on your wall, but I want to give you a coin that you can carry with you.
Okay.
We had some coins made, challenge coins for the department. We present to people in these circumstances. The front of it says Cannon Falls Police Department Integrity, Knowledge, Courage. And on the back, in the center, it says Dedicated to Do the Right Thing. And that's extremely important for our department, is to make sure that we always do the right thing, and not lose sight of what the letter of the law, what the spirit of the law is, because they are two different things. And I try to instill in my officers that if we do the right things, we make the right decisions, we can always sleep good at night. And I think Tom brought with him those same basic values in the interviewing that we've done, in the conversations that we've had, and I greatly appreciate the time that you served on here. The other part of it is, is presented from the office of the chief of police. Tom, for you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Wow.
I'd like to thank the council for the support that you've given me over these years. I've enjoyed my opportunity to be on the police commission. My wife and I came here about 30 years ago, and Cannon Falls is only the fourth community in which we've lived during our 58 years together. And Cannon Falls has been the star in our memories as far as living places goes. I kind of feel sorry for a lot of the friends I've made here in Cannon Falls, who've never lived anyplace else. They don't realize what a treasure they have. So thank you all for making Cannon Falls a spectacular place to live and work. Thank you.
Tom, I'd just like to say thank you for the last 10 years that I've known you on the police commission, for all your input, your knowledge, and the guidance that you've given us in making decisions on the police commission. So thank you very much, and all of your future endeavors.
Thank you.
Tom, I just got to say something, because I met you the first time about three, four years ago when I got in council. I could just feel the compassion in your things with the police department, and it was such a wonderful feeling for me to see your input and help with this over the years. And I definitely think I need to get a hold of the Pope tomorrow, and we need you to be sainted. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Right, this time, we will move on to item 6B, which we have a presentation from Chambers, Cannon Falls Chamber of Commerce, Director Kylie Pauslin.
Did everyone get a handout? I do have a few extra. Fantastic. I started as the chamber president in December, and enjoyed my time with Pat Anderson. And as of January 1st, I've been on my own. However, the board has been very active. And so, looking at the calendar of events, the biggest change that we've made is the first Thursday Fun Fests. They're now going to be second Thursday Fun Fests, but we're just going to call them Chamber Fests, Chamber Fun Fests. The reason for the change is with the North Star Grand Prix Bike Race, and that has been declining in participation. And so we needed to come up with a community event that would bring more public people down to the bike race. And so the bike race is changing location, mainly because of the construction, but they're going to be right here on Mill Street Bridge, and going west, and we'll be on Mill Street, going east. And so the rest of the Fun Fest followed suit. We are starting in May this year, and we are hoping to go through September, and possibly an October Fest on a Saturday in October. And so adding those kinds of things. The breakfasts that we've been having, I want to thank Mayor Robbie Robinson. We had almost 60 people at your breakfast on February 22nd. So that was a very good turnout, and I was very pleased. I hope you were as well. The next ones we have coming are Dr. Benson from Mayo Clinic, Diane Howard from the Food Hub Farmers Market, Republican Barb Haley. She chose to do the June one, so that the legislation will just be finishing, and she'll be able to present us the updates. And then Jennifer Nelson is actually moving from April down to August. And Jennifer is from the South Minnesota Initiative Foundation, which is very good for businesses in the community. The other big change that we've had is our newsletter, and I hope everyone is receiving that. We have changed from a monthly format to a weekly format, so we can reduce the size, it's easier to read, and the nice thing about it is, the calendar of events, which is always on the front page, we include any chamber members' events on the calendar of events. They just need to have it turned in before Thursday noon of that week. We also have Last Chance on the Discover Guide 2017 is actually, we have very few left, and that was in January. And so our new 2018 Discover Guide will be coming out May 1st. We've moved it up a month, because we want to get it in the hands of our tourists. We are also planning this fall to change and move up the layout, selling of the Discover Guide for 2019. Our plan is to have that come out in January. We get phone calls at the chamber of people coming to visit in March, February, the snowmobilers come in, and we don't have anything new to hand out to them. And so that's another adjustment that we're going to be making. We do have the Easter egg hunt coming up, March 31st, and so if you have children, we will be meeting at the public library's driveway at 10:00 a.m. for them to pick up their numbers, and then they travel around, whoops, excuse me, they travel around to the different businesses that are participating to find their bag of candy. And so last year, we had 280 children participate in 20 businesses. So I'm hoping to reach that goal again. And just wanted to shout out that we do have gold level sponsors. What a gold level sponsor is, is it's $1,000. They do get their name listed in all of our newsletters, as well as on the flower baskets, golf tournament, deck the halls, and, oh, the recognition luncheon that we have in December. And so Dakota Electric is on board. Mayo Clinic called me today to let me know that they will be on board. Does anyone have any questions?
Well, I know you've hit the ground running since you've started. You're getting lots of good things, and we welcome you, and keep up the good work, and we look forward to continuing to work with you, and, you know, have the city and our local businesses work together, because that's what keeps Cannon Falls strong, is working together and trying to grow Cannon Falls and bring interested parties to Cannon Falls in the right way.
Absolutely.
So I applaud you for stepping up.
We just had to step in and just get going. Like I mentioned, the board of directors, we have lengthy meetings now, and it's all discussion, and they are all eager to try new things. And that's very refreshing. And so...
Thank you, thank you, and whatever we can do to help keep us informed.
Absolutely. I sure will. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next presentation, it will be the Third Street Bridge project. As you well know, the historical Third Street Bridge is due a replacement, and we've been working with the county, the state, and SRF to, we've gotten a grant, and I'll let Greg Isaacson kind of explain it.
Good evening. Yeah, as Mayor Robinson mentioned, we're here to talk to you about the Third Street Bridge. It's a historic bridge. It's a little over 100 years old at this point. Mendat worked out with the Historical Society, they basically came into an agreement that there were four bridges throughout the state of Minnesota that they were very interested in having rehabilitated. So we were actually approached by Mendat and asked if this was a project that we wanted to get involved with. We worked with your city administrator at the time. We did get federal money for this project. It is slated for the project to happen in 2020. We did get a grant from the Historical Society to help pay for the design portion of it, and we went through the process, talked to several different consultants, and ended up hiring SRF. Jamison has quite extensive experience in this field of rehabilitating these old bridges. So part of the grant that we got from the Historical Society, so that they want to have one meeting, at least one meeting, to hear from the public, to hear if there's anything they have to say about this bridge, if there's certain parts that they would like to see replaced, or whatever general, let the public know that we're going to be fixing this bridge, and get the general public's comments on it. So that's the main reason why we're here today. Right now, Jamison has 60% bridge plans have been submitted to Mendat right now. They are very close to having a 90% smittle in, and we do need to make a presentation at some time to the Historical Society before they do finalize up the design for this bridge. Is there any questions while we're trying to figure out how to get your computer to work?
I would suggest several.
Greg, are they going to replace the existing planks, or is that going to be it?
Planks, the planks will go. The original bridge had a concrete deck on it, and so they are going to be replacing the deck with a lightweight concrete. It actually would be good for the bridge. I think when they took off the weight from the concrete, took certain members of the bridge that were in tension and put them in compression. Bridges don't like it when you do that. So, and the old concrete lasted for, I don't know, about 70 years or so, and I know those planks have been replaced at least once, and they just don't last very long, and it's just not part of the historic design that was originally built.
I've always been concerned that with the planking on there, that our salt and sanding was getting down through to the beams underneath. And to me, if we go with a concrete deck or a solid deck, we keep that from happening. So being somebody that's mechanical and stuff, I've always been really concerned about that.
Yeah, one thing is that there is, on the south side of the bridge, there really was no seal to prevent whatever was on the planking from running right down onto the stringers of the beam of the bridge, and that's why Jamison is going to have all those replaced. So with that, it looks like he's up and running, so if I could present Jamison with SRF, and I need to congratulate him. I believe you were recently elevated to principal?
I, I was, yes.
Congratulations in that field. So, I'll turn it over to uh, to Jamison.
All right, thanks Greg. Um, yeah, Greg described kind of the bridge and, and process we're going through. And yeah, we're very, very close to submitting, I guess, what we call ninety-five percent plans to DOT and to um, Cultural Resources Unit within the Department of Transportation and also the State Historic Preservation Office. So, um, you know Greg, Sue Granger, she's our uh, bridge historian. She couldn't be here today because of uh, the weather. Uh, and then myself, Jamison Vice Vinger, I'm with SRF Consulting and I'm uh, the lead bridge engineer on the project. Uh, we'll start off with just a little bit of background and historic information. Uh, the existing Third Street Bridge is the third bridge to occupy this crossing. The first bridges were built in eighteen seventy-four and eighteen eighty-nine, and this bridge was built in nineteen ten. It is a uh, surviving example of a bridge called a Pennsylvania Through Trust. And it's, it's uh, one of only three, I think, in the, in the state, and this is the oldest one. Uh, the bridge is also a, a rare example of a work of a pioneering uh, uh, bridge engineer, a Lewis Wolf of St. Paul, and an important bridge builder, Alexander Y. Bain of Minneapolis. Bain's name is actually imprinted on a metal, on a metal plaque that's just on the uh, bridge's two portals. Uh, the bridge was listed uh, in the National Register of Historic Places in nineteen eighty-nine. Uh, we're here today because uh, federal funds will be used for construction on this project. Uh, Section one oh six of the National Historic Preservation Act applies to the project. Section one oh six requires that the repairs be designed in accordance with the Secretary of Interior Standard for the Treatment of Historic Properties. And uh, we are following rehabilitation standards which provide guidance on preserving the bridge's historic character while at the same time upgrading its engineering features to provide a structurally sound, long-lived, and low-maintenance structure. Uh, to help design the repairs, we're working with a uh, a bridge historian. Uh, Gemini Research is, is the company. And um, this uh, multidisciplinary approach between a historian and an engineer will help ensure that after the repairs, the bridge will continue to convey its historic character and significance. Some of the significant features of the bridge include the configuration of its trust, trust members, which are shown in these two pictures. Um, other important features include the, the ornamental railing, which is a, a rare built-up riveted uh, style, and the uh, overhang brackets which support the railing. Uh, except for the timber deck, there's, there've been relatively um, few alterations since it was first built. There's kind of a historic photo um, from when it was first built. Uh, here's a, here's another one. And you can kind of see in, uh, in the background there, a windmill. And that was actually on the bridge at one time as some kind of power generator. I'm not sure if it was for the, the farmer that was living right there. Uh, and these are the construction limits. Um, we, these have actually been revised a little bit on the north side. We're, we're reducing them towards the east to stay out of um, the uh, the property owners right away. Uh, the first, the first, I guess, issue that we had to deal with uh, were, were safety and items that affect the, the bridge's safety and load carrying capacity and just general operation. So, that's why, you know, in the, the city and um, really wanted a concrete deck. And so, we're replacing the existing deteriorated uh, concrete deck. Uh, we're using a, a lightweight concrete. Uh, it's at least seven inches thick and it will prevent the icing salts and, and such from actually getting down into the floor members. Another thing that we're uh, also doing is, is we're armoring the, the abut, bridge abutments to prevent um, any future undermining. In the, I believe it was the late nineties, a flood event happened which undermined the southern abutment and caused, caused the bridge to tilt just ever so slightly. So, hopefully, um, with the installation of this riprap, we can prevent that from happening in the future. Um, another, another area that has, has become deteriorated over time uh, is, is this, the uh, the stringer and beam supports. Uh, the de-icing salts, as mentioned, have, have kind of permeated through that timber deck. And um, the actual beams themselves are, are in pretty good shape. It's the, it's the brackets that support those beams that have been corroded. So, replacing those where needed. Uh, additionally, the, the overhang brackets that support that sidewalk, those will be, um, isolated repairs will be conducted on those. You can kind of see a little hole due to corrosion on that particular member. Uh, and then, in addition to safety, we're also addressing long-term maintenance needs of the bridge. Um, so that the bridge will receive a new coat of paint. It'll be completely sandblasted. The existing paint on the bridge is lead-based. So, it will need to be encased to protect the environment. Uh, the, the new paint will be a semi-gloss neutral gray color, which uh, should match what was the original color on the bridge. Um, there is a, a large crack in the south abutment wing wall, which is restraining the side slopes. So, uh, we're, instead of replacing this, we're doing a, a, what we call a pinned, pinned style repair, uh, which involves drilling some rebar into the crack and then filling it with a, a grout. Uh, we're also replacing the bearings. Uh, currently, due to the bridge tilting, the bearings have um locked up against the abutments. So, and they've um suffered a lot of corrosion. So, we're, we're gonna uh, pretty much jack the bridge up and replace these, the bearings so they allow for future movement. And then, um, there's, Greg also mentioned the, the, how the de-icing salts, especially on the south side, um, coming down the hill, really enter the bridge joint on the south end. So, what we're, what we're gonna do at the south end is we're gonna just completely get rid of, of the joint to try and eliminate that water from further permeating down on that abutment. Uh, we will have a joint on the north end, but however, we're installing a rubber gland to help seal that. Then um, the, the, uh, there was a water main. I'm not sure when it was put on the bridge, but um, the, the insulation for that water main has undergone uh, quite a, has taken quite a beating and it's got a lot of bird holes. It's been beat up from hail. So, what we're proposing to do is install a uh, encased insulation system, which involves pretty much a styrofoam insulation, um, encased in a vapor barrier to prevent rot of that insulation and then surrounded by a um, aluminum jacket. And this is kind of just a diagram of what it's, it will look like uh, when it's completed. And then, we, just to kind of preserve some of the historic character, um, there, there are four existing, or there were four um, kind of ornamental-style cast metal end posts. So, what we're gonna do is we're gonna take those and salvage them and have it, have a mold recast of them. And then, they're gonna recreate those and install those again. And we're also going to be installing a um, or replacing the, the metal railing on both ends of the bridge. You can kind of see the existing condition here where the railing, the railing has been hit and it's, it's uh, suffered a lot of corrosion. And in some spots, I think it's supported with like a fence post here and there now. So, we're gonna just uh, replace that with a, a nicer-looking, more durable uh, style railing. Uh, and then the last topic is just the construction funding and timeframe. So, currently, federal money has been allocated for about eighty percent of the construction. The, the city in coordination with MNDOT and, and with Greg is seeking funding for the remaining twenty percent. And it's listed in MNDOT's State Transportation Improvement Plan for a two thousand and twenty construction. So, with that, um, I'll, um, as part of the Section one oh six process, the public is invited to comment on the bridge rehab. Uh, questions or comments can be directed to me or passed on to the design team through Lanell. I've uh, placed a handout on the table over there. So, with, with any contact information, just the summary of the project. So, with that, if there's any questions, let me know.
Okay.
Everybody? Couple of questions.
Leroy?
Is the gas main gonna stay on there too, or?
The, we had a utility meeting, I think it was in Oc, it was in October or November. And the, the uh, the gas company, it's their policy to, if, if a bridge is gonna have any construction on it, they take the, the main off. So, they're gonna be taking it off and, and boring it under the river.
Oh, okay. And then, how about uh, the walkway on there? Would that stay about the same width it is, or would that be wider, or?
It'll be exactly the same width.
Exactly the same?
The only, the, the biggest difference will be the two ramps coming up to the walkway. On one, on, I think it's the north end of the bridge. We're ex, kind of extending it, just lengthening it a bit. So, it's a little um, more gradual transition for Americans with the Liberties Act requirements.
Right, uh, the, the problem is, we've had with it, it's been kind of a toss-up between letting snowmobiles go across there, plowing it off, and let people walk across there. I guess uh, one of the concerns I would have is if uh, the city needs to work closely with you and on the south end to make sure that we get that a little wider there uh, on the road so that people can actually go to the right and go straight up without coming out towards the traffic.
Yeah, the.
Kind of wise or narrow?
Yeah, the, the, the problem, and we looked at that, the, the, the main problem with that is there's a storm sewer that sits right in the curb line there. So, if you were to widen it out, um, well, one, you'd be impacting that existing utility and two, the drainage wouldn't work out so well. Right now, the, the way the drainage works is that the water comes straight down the hill and any, any water that bypasses the uh, storm sewers goes right through that joint and out of the abutment. So, we've kind of had to mess with the grains a little bit to get that to work.
Right, yeah, and I know you guys will figure that out. But just keep us informed and we, we certainly want to work to make that a good approach on that side too, if we can do something.
Yep.
Thank you.
That's good. Anybody else?
Anybody else got anything? I think it's gonna be a good project. I mean, we all know it's uh, uh, been deteriorating over the years. So, it was good to be able to get some federal dollars and uh, to help pay for this thing. And uh, we'll, with Greg's help and SRF's help, we'll get that, keep that bridge up and mobile so we don't have to close it down.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Again, uh, I don't think we had two tonight. We do. Okay, is there, uh, there's no action required at this time by the council, but uh, is there anybody from the public that would like to uh, speak with these two about the project while they're here? If not, thanks.
If anybody has any questions, Lanell or Robbie.
We'll do that. Thanks Greg. Thanks, Jamison. All right, uh, that moves us on to item eight this evening, which is the consent agenda. Items on this area of the agenda uh, may be adopted or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. Uh, for the folks at home, I will read the consent agenda. Item A is adjusting correct claims for the accounting period ending February the twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen. Item B are the meeting minutes for the February twentieth, two thousand and eighteen city council meeting. Item C is hire the two thousand and eighteen pool manager. Item D, Resolution twenty-three thirty-three, accepting a donation of two hundred and fifty-five dollars from Wayne Bell to the Police Department. Item E, the summer/fall event street closures. Item F, internal promotion to fill police officer position. Item G, authorization to purchase a grill for the ambulance department. Item H, introduction and first reading of ordinance three fifty-eight, amending chapter fifty-two of the Cannon Falls City Code Water Service concerning nonessential water usage. Item I is call for public hearing abatement for the winery. And the other two items were already uh, removed and acted on. So, at this time, the chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kenz, second by John. Are there any items anybody wishes to remove?
Yeah, I'd like to bring down C, G, H, and I.
C, G, H, and I. So, that will be, C will become item eight B. What were the other two?
Uh, C, G.
Okay.
H and I.
G will become item eight C. And I will become item eight D.
Did you get H, Robbie?
Uh, no, H, H will be D. Which is ordinance three fifty-eight. And then, E will be the uh, winery abatement. With the removal of items C, G, H, and I, the chair will take a motion. Do we have the motion?
I'd like to call A and F.
Okay, and so, uh, item A will become item eight F. And which one was the other one?
F.
And item F will become item eight G.
Probably would've been easier to just do them all.
Yeah. Didn't need to consent anything tonight. Okay, uh, with that, is there anything else anybody wishes to bring down? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry's. Moves us on to item eight A this evening, uh, which is gonna be our council business. Uh, as you know, uh, Lanell has stepped in to um, fill the vacancy of uh, interim basis for city administrator, which means she is doing double duties. Uh, and uh, uh, as she's done in the past, we've have uh, done an increase to her pay while she's doing the double duties. Um, and at the Personnel Committee this evening, um, we are recommending that uh, we move her uh, to uh, grade twenty uh, temporarily and pay her fifty-five, fifty-four uh, under that and give her a week's, uh, forty, forty hours worth of vacation uh, while she's, for this interim time. So.
The board should approve that.
So, I got a motion by Leroy?
Second.
Second by Ken. Discussion.
I assume that's on an accrual basis? Vacation time? Or?
One time.
One time, yeah. Oh.
Right.
Okay, got it.
Yep.
What, Robbie, what uh, where are we at in the process for moving forward on the administrator?
We, at this time, uh, we are actually having another Personnel Committee meeting next uh, Tuesday. And that, we are going to be uh, reviewing the job descriptions. And then, at that time, um, we're gonna be looking at how we're gonna move forward as far as posting the position. Uh, you know, if, if you remember last time, I, we had a uh, firm that said, an outside firm that said that they would uh, do it for us for about seventeen thousand dollars. But I don't think we need to pay anybody seventeen thousand dollars to, to find our administrator. So, I think we're gonna, uh, the Personnel Committee pretty much agreed on that. So, I mean, it's up to the council if they want to do that. Uh, they can recommend that we use that. If not, uh, we'll use uh, the League of Minnesota Cities, uh, the other trade journals that uh, um, are out there to advertise uh, the position. And uh, once we have posted it, we'll bring in the resumes, the applications, and then we'll put the panel together to do the interviews to, to find the new administrator at that time.
I think what the council indicated last time was that we wanted the Personnel Committee to take the lead on it. My question is, how soon will you fill the vacancy on the Personnel Committee?
Well.
You're gonna need all hands on deck.
As far as the uh, as far as fill the vacancy on the Personnel Committee, I'll, I'll be filling that here this next week. Uh, by the next meeting, we'll have that, that portion of it done. Um, the, um, but we hope to try to post this thing by April because it's gonna take anywhere, probably about four to five months to get somebody seated. Because if we have somebody that's already an administrator somewhere or an assistant, already an administrator somewhere, or an assistant, they're gonna have to give notice. And in those positions, it's usually 30 to 60 days' notice that those folks have to give, so we're looking out probably July, August timeframe at minimum before we get anybody seated in that position. So we need to start the process to look for the replacement, and go from there, and do our due diligence in coming up with the right person for the new administrator for Cannon Any other discussion? So, all those in favor of the increase?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Moves us on to item 8B, which is to hire the 2018 pool manager.
Yeah. I read that over, and I don't know, the Irishman in me came out, I got so irritated. I just can't believe we are paying this person $13 an hour to manage this for us, and has to have these certificates. And the responsibility of kids, the responsibility of the building, and the scheduling, and all this, I was really insulted that this is the offer we made, and I would like to go ahead with it and take care of it, and I'm almost insulted to say this, but I would rather it be at least $15 an hour for the wages, because I think that's just an insult to ask somebody to take on that kind of responsibility for 13 bucks an hour. And I'm curious to hear what my colleagues think of that.
And Lonell, why was that, do we know why that was the rate that was put in there?
That rate was based on what was paid to last year's manager, plus the 2.5% cola that the other employees received, so that's where that number came from.
I'd like to make a motion, we go ahead with it at 15 bucks an hour.
Okay, so I will motion to approve it, but at the $15 an hour.
And where, oh, I'm sorry, motion on the floor.
Yep, we got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion.
What was budgeted for that position? Anybody? Probably what the previous person was making, plus cola, right?
Lose money on that pool all the time anyways.
That wasn't, right. But we, someone will complain about that, too. So what was budgeted for this position?
I don't, there wasn't a specific dollar amount budgeted, but it was based on previous year's expenses, so it would've been in the ballpark of the 13.
Right.
What was...
What was being paid, plus cola. Okay, and so, to the extent that the amount paid to the person now would exceed that budget amount, that comes directly out of the city budget? Or is it out of Public Works? Where exactly is that being taken from?
There's a pool department within the budget in Public Works, so the expenses would come from there. If it's over the budget at the end of the season, anything over budget would come from reserves.
Okay. And then, is that also the area that we have been allocating money to for a pool improvement in the future? Isn't there that happening? I'm sorry, I know there's all these different pools, pools, pots of allocation, and I'm not sure if I always understand how they...
I'm not sure that there's really an allocation specifically for a new pool.
Okay.
That's just something that's been talked about. It's in the CIP plan.
Yeah.
But the funding isn't there right now to cover anything like that, right?
Okay.
At this point.
So because this is a new motion, no one has looked at whether or not this would result in a deficit in that pool budget for 2018, right? Why would anyone have done that?
Right. No, that hasn't been done. You know, it could probably be absorbed, I just don't know what the impact to the budget would really be. As mentioned, that's never really been a moneymaker for the city. But the city has always, you know, felt that it's our responsibility to teach the area children how to swim, and to provide a place for them to go during the summer, and so we take that on as just something that we support. So it would just go in line with that. It's up to you on how much you want to do that.
In for a penny, in for a pound, as it were. Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Anybody got any other discuss, I mean? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Moves us on to item 8C, which is the authorization to purchase a grill for the ambulance department.
Oh, I just had to tell Tim tonight that, you know, I read this part, too, and it really irritated me, because you people down there are so valuable. You live under such hyper terms all the time. If it takes a gas grill to keep you guys happy, and the gals happy down there, get your gas grill. You don't need to come and talk to us, tell Lonell you need a gas grill. Just get your grill. And if you run out of LP, you don't have to come and ask, just get a LP, too. So I make a motion, we go ahead and approve this.
I will second that. It was already put in Tim's budget for this, so...
Okay, so we have a motion by Leroy, a second by Bill. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. All right, that moves us on to item 8D, which is the introduction and first reading of ordinance 358, amending chapter 52 of the Cannon Falls City Code for Water Service concerning nonessential water usage.
That thing there, I thought was really scary. I'm sure we have to sign that, we have to do that, we have to follow the rules, but I, whole idea that Minnesota is the water capital of the United States, and we're gonna censor people when they can water, and what they can do if they wanna water their tomato plants, or like that. And if you read that ordinance over, it's really kinda freaky to me, and then I talk, if you wanna be a conservative, talk about over-government regulations. I think this certainly is it. But I also know, we probably have to sign it, we probably have to do it. Thank you for taking care of Lonell and getting it in. But if you read that over there, I think it's went too far. But I'll make a motion to go ahead with it.
Okay, I have a motion by Leroy, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Yeah, carries. Motion by Leroy, a second by Ken. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Moves us on to item 8E, which is the call for public hearing for the abatement for the winery.
Yeah, the only thing I wanted to say on that, that if anybody has got any second thoughts on what we did on the winery, now would be the time to speak up, and I still think we could've debated that a lot more and come up with a better plan, but it is what it is. So that's it for me.
And I have a motion to approve, to call the hearing.
Just to clarify, it's not that now is the time to talk about it, it's that at this public hearing that is being announced and set for April 17th.
Right.
April 17. For all you at home, mark on your calendar, April 17.
Yep, and that'll be for the hearing for the, for the abatement.
Right.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll move to approve the call for public hearing set for April 17th.
Second. Motion by Seater, second by Ken. Okay, now, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Pass is 4-1. All right, that moves us on to item 8F, which is adjusting correct claims.
I just wanna comment on page three, the consulting group on the bridge, the Third Street Bridge, the $24,000, is that what the historical society is going to pay that?
Yes, the funding for that has already been received from the historical society, so that's the money that's being used for that.
Okay, very good.
Any other discussion on that? I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Bill, second by Ken. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Moves us on to item 8G, the internal promotion to fill the police officer position.
I just wanna comment on that briefly, I just wanna commend the Chief McCormick for promoting from within. I think that was a good idea. You had some good candidates there, and I thought it speeds up the process, they know the system, and I thought it was a good idea, and I commend you on that.
Thank you, Councilman. As I outlined in the memo, Lieutenant Berg and I sat down and discussed which would be better, you know, having received some input at the authorization to hire this, you know, to take a look at internal, which was one of the things we were gonna look at. And so we had an interview, and we felt very comfortable, we've got a candidate that we think will serve our community well. And you're right, it hopefully will allow us to get him through the process sooner, because it was familiar, we won't have to spend as much time on some of those things, we can focus on some of the other areas. So, thank you.
Yeah, very good.
Thanks. Chair will take a motion to approve.
So moved.
No second.
Motion by Ken, second by Bill. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. I'd just like to say thanks, Jeff, because I know you guys go through a lot looking for the right person, and if we can hire from within, and we've had success doing that in the past, so...
Yeah, it has served us well, Mayor. We have made out some outside hires, but those hires have also served us well. It just provides our reserves the opportunity, especially if they're from the area, to stay in the area, and we're very happy to be able to do that.
Now, one thing, Jeff, I would say is that it's really appreciated, but I think you're almost doing too good a job, because everybody wants to hire our people. So thanks for that problem, but if we could put something in there where they gotta stick with us for at least a year or two, that'd be...
There definitely are some thieving agencies around us, I won't name them, but at the same time, they do have the ability to offer our officers, you know, at some point they get reaching their career where they wanna do a few more things, and we've got, you know, officers and a chief and a lieutenant, and that's one of the realities for our agency. And it's something that we're gonna be stuck with for a while, and so when we have good talent that wants to move on and maybe do some more investigations, that type of stuff, we've benefited from having them here. I certainly would like to see them, you know, stick around for six, eight years, but we've been getting, on average, about four out of them, so I think that's a good investment back for our community and the talent that we hire.
Well, the trouble is, for the council, we've always gotta be budget conscientious. We probably could handle another 1,500 people in Cannon Falls with the same amount of people we got, but we have the high overhead, and it's just the way it works. It's not good or bad, but of course, they get offered more money, and they gotta move on, you can't blame them. But, yeah, it's a good problem, Jeff, thank you.
I think staff-wise, we're at a good point, as the police commission has examined this, you know, quite a bit over the last few years. Where we currently are provides, you know, dual coverage in the evenings, which can be our busier times during the day. Jill and, not Jill, Joel and I fill in as our second-day officer, well, kind of taking turns on who handles calls when they need assistance, and it's working out well for us. I could, conscious couldn't come back and say, we need another officer at this point. I would love to get an officer to be assigned to, you know, like a narcotics task force, so that we could get more focus in that area, 'cause we work in that area, but we have to work on it in between other things. And we're just like any other community, we're not isolated from the opioid problems and some of the other controlled substance problems, but we try to do our best in dealing with those with the time that we have available to us.
Yeah. Well, good.
Well, Cannon Falls is not unique in the policing, where they wanna move on to bigger things, there's lots of towns in this state that run the same problem we've run into for years, so, you know, we know it's kind of a revolving door, but it's what we gotta live with.
Well, we've been lucky, I mean, for the, over the last probably five years, we've had a lot more of them stick around a lot longer than what we've had when I first became Mayor, and before, they were, it was definitely a revolving door at that time.
I mean, we, you know, the, with Tom's presentation earlier, he and I were talking before the event, and we really, right now, I think we've got one of the best teams that we've had, it's just the personalities are all meshing very well, things are moving smoothly. I'm not worried, if something happened to me, I broke my leg, whatever, I'm not worried, because we've got incredible talent in the department that would just make sure things ran smooth. And for me, that's quite a relief in knowing that we've got that level of dedication and skills within our own agency, and I'm very proud of them, and I certainly appreciate, you know, council recognizing that and expressing their pride for them as well.
Nothing really, except the library's been really busy. Ha, now it's on. Library's just been very busy, we've been doing a lot of programs with Hot Reads for Cold Nights. We're planning for summer reading, and if you want to know what's going on at the library, we revamped our website, it is looking very cool, so please check it out. And we post everything on our Facebook page, everything that we do, and all of our events. So please look at our Facebook page, like it, find out what our events are, and then attend. Like, I actually have done the annual report, haven't filed it yet, but our program attendance was up by about over 1,000 people last year, and our library visits were over 31,000 people. So we're very active, but I want it to be more active. That's it.
Thanks.
Thanks, Nicole.
Greg?
Nothing from me?
I got a question, Greg, and I know Lonell was gonna send you an email on it. Representative Haley contacted me about the, she was working on some stuff last year about the sewer bridge project, and wanna know if you've received anything from the PCA or any of those folks on that, so that I can report back to her on that project, if anything's come our way.
Well, nothing other than the fact that last year, we placed it on the project priority list, it ranked 50th with a score of 64. We discussed, we talked about that tonight at the Public Works Commission, and we'll probably bring that forward in a month to see what the council wants to move ahead. What that means is, the PPL list is a low-interest loan revolving fund from the state, so we score likely in the fundable range next year if you want to move ahead, but again, it's a loan program, not a grant program.
Okay. Thanks, I'll get back to her on that. Wes?
I got nothing.
Just wanna say thanks to the guys for cleaning the streets up last night, they did a good job overnight getting the streets cleaned so that everybody could get around this morning. I know they were cleaning up in town to go to school, I guess it must've been bad in the country, so they couldn't run the buses or something.
What time did you start last night, 11?
We started at 11 o'clock last night, so we were from 11 to about 8 this morning.
Thanks. Chief, anything else?
I do have a question for council. Consular McCusker raised a question regarding snowmobiles on the Third Street Bridge when it gets revamped. We have had complaints about snowmobiles running the sidewalks on some of our other bridges in reviewing our ordinance. It is permissible unless council takes an action to make it prohibited. So I would just sort of throw that out, and not action needed tonight, but you know, if we do revamp the Third Street Bridge, we may wanna make sure that we're not letting the investment get, you know, scraped up with winter traffic. Just something to be considered down the road.
Thanks. Lonell? Bill?
I just wanna say thank you for letting me back on. Someone said I'm a little bit crazy to do it, but I'm re-energized and ready to go, and I look forward to helping the city of Cannon Falls.
Nicole? Nicole kinda stole what I was gonna talk about. I confess, I had tuned into the Facebook page before, but I have, I'm paying a little more attention to it now selfishly, because I'm doing some pollinator classes, which by the way, join us, this, is it this Saturday?
Yeah, it's this Saturday.
It is this Saturday, for a pollinator class at the library at 1 o'clock to learn how to be pollinator-friendly. In any event, but I have been really amazed by the volume and variety of the programs that are offered by our library. I've always kinda been a library person, but this is really remarkable, what we're doing in our location, and the way it was... And the way it was, the technology that was available for me for the class that I did down there, it was just remarkable. So, you know, if you haven't been down recently, and, or if you're not following them on Facebook, do yourself a favor and do it. It's really, it's for all ages, for all wide varieties of interests, it's really quite remarkable, I applaud you. Um, so, thank you, that's it.
I second that, Cedar.
Thanks, Leroy.
Son?
Nothing.
Leroy?
Uh, I got a few items for you tonight. One is, uh, we got a new gal, uh, Mrs. Montgomery on the library board. Uh, it's pretty exciting, a younger gal, and her husband's actually on the park board, so it's kind of a family-type thing here. So, the, the extra vacancy is filled now, and, and, uh, we're excited about the person we got. Um, the other thing, I wanted to give a hats off to EDA tonight. I, I love small-town America, I love what it represents, and that car dealership on the north end of town is all about good things. Uh, that's what small-town America is about. And, uh, just really love the car dealership, they're up and running. Uh, what a great thing that's been sitting there for years doing nothing. The other thing is, on Saturday, I had to get some parts out at Ace, and, and, uh, the gathering place out there was just packed. There was things going on out there, so those are the good little things that are happening in our, our town that really helps. Um, the other thing is, uh, uh, I just wanna throw this out at the council, because I'd rather not come to the Personnel Committees and stuff, but, uh, through our transition here, I have been in contact with Dave Maroney. My ideal situation is for me that we just move Dave Maroney up to administrator. He was reluctant to accept that and to talk about that, but I asked him to consider it, and he would be willing to do that. And to me, that's another thing that small-town America is about, we have just our good people, and we move them up. The other thing, I've had two other people contact me this week, uh, local people about the public works. Either one of them would really be good, and that's another local person-type thing again. So, I would like, uh, for Personnel Committee and stuff to just, just completely think about if we can just move somebody up. And I also didn't wanna get into a legal problem, so I did call Roger and talk to him for twenty minutes about the legalities, if we just hire our own people and move them up. And he said, "That's all fine." So, uh, please keep that in mind. The other thing, if you guys could help me out, is, uh, I got the old age thing, and I forgot the hearing aid tonight, and the sound could be about double what it is down here. I have a heck of a time hearing. So, uh, if, if Mike could crank up the sound down here, it'd really help this old guy out. Thank you.
Ken?
Nothing.
Uh, got, one thing tonight, uh, well, actually, a couple of things. Congratulations to our students that participated, uh, in the state wrestling tournament this past weekend. I think, uh, I'd want to finish, was it third or fourth?
Fourth.
Fourth in the state. Yeah, Hayden finished fourth, so congratulations to him. Uh, it's a tough sport, and, uh, when you make it that far, no matter where you finish, uh, you've done well, 'cause there's a lot of good athletes, uh, uh, in, in the wrestling portion of it. Uh, the other thing is, a citizen contacted me, uh, he just, uh, picked up two coyotes on their, uh, trail cam uh, over on the city's west side, uh, about, around the Cannon River, in that area over there. Uh, so, they're in town, uh, watch your small animals. If you see, if you happen to spot them, please, uh, let the police department know, let me know. I mean, call me, and, uh, I'll get in touch with them, so that we can get DNR involved, or whatever we gotta do to alleviate that problem, because, uh, uh, those things are, do like to attack small animals. Oh, and large animals, uh, somebody was saying something the other day that they heard a big, a lot of noise the other night, and a pack of them had attacked a deer right there by their house. So, uh, uh, just to let you know, the coyotes are around, so, uh, watch out for your small animals, uh, any animal, per se, because, uh, uh, they like to play their game. So, uh, that's all I've got tonight. So, uh, with that, uh, chair will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion, motion is second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.